We will bow in an attitude of prayer. Gracious heavenly father, we come before you this evening with gracious hearts and thanksgiving, thanking you for another beautiful day in Washington County. We pray for our citizens, pray for the second day of school, for the safety and well-being of our students and teachers and administration countywide. Thank you for this opportunity to share with mayor and council of our municipality of Keyesville this evening. May we collaborate and work together, share through communication and assistance throughout their town and their community. Lord, guide us, direct us, and use us here this evening. May we honor and please you in all that we do and say, for it's in your son's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we'll call the meeting to order. And tonight, as we've already mentioned, is the town of Keyesville, and I ask for the mayor and council, take it and go. It's yours.
All right. Thank you all very much. Thank you county commissioners for hosting us and for your time tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to meet with you here in your chambers. We enjoy a good relationship between the county and the town, and we hope that that, of course, continues. Every time we reach out to the county staff, we're always greeted with a prompt and efficient response, county roads or whatever issue we're faced with. So we brought some issues tonight that were gathered from the council and some residents. So I'm gonna just go through those, not expecting any answers tonight. Couple come from us, couple from the residents. They're not in any particular order, so we'll get right down to business. I'll introduce each one and then give our council person a chance to speak to it if they wish. And we're certainly not expecting any answers on all these tonight, so just to take them for reference, and we can talk about them in more depth later. So I'll get into the list you have received, first one being enforcement of golf carts, classification, regulations, and enforcement in the county. And I believe Lisa has...
Yeah, this is a question that's come up within the town, whether or not they're allowed, who can drive them if they are allowed, and we have...
We haven't had a whole lot of clarity about whether or not they are allowed, and even how they're classified. So I couldn't find any specific regulations related to golf carts in Washington County. I know some other counties have this, and obviously Keyesville doesn't have any regulations. So I don't know if any of you have any...
I do have some information. I did speak with Lieutenant Grimm. He's here this evening. He has indicated that golf carts cannot be operated on public roadways. Maryland traffic laws does not have a provision to properly license and tag them, including vehicle insurance that would allow them to operate legally on public roadways. So any person observing a golf cart being operated on a public roadway is encouraged to call the emergency communications center and report the traffic offense so that law enforcement can be dispatched to the area and handle the report.
Okay, great. And so speed limit doesn't matter?
They're just not, they're not able to be licensed at all, correct, or tagged.
Would that be 911 or the non-emergency number?
I would call the non-emergency number.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right. I'll get to the second one. It's an issue I raised that has to do with the county highway facility there in Keyesville on Route 34 and Kaufman Farms Road, just suggesting some possible improvements to appearance, perhaps a paint job. You know, they do a great job there, but the building is looking a little rough.
Well, as you know, I believe a vehicle did hit the building not that long ago. So we are doing some repairs to correct the, to repair the fence as well as repair the building where it was hit by a vehicle. But in addition to that, we do have our director of public works here with us. His name is Andrew Eschelman. He has indicated that he will reach out to you after this. He can have either himself or highway staff meet with you to talk about maybe planting some trees and where you would like those trees to be located inside the highway fence there. So that's what we can do for that.
Great, thank you. I'll move on to an issue Judy raised, which is education funding, impact of new developments. This is countywide, not necessarily in Keyesville, but particularly in Boonsborough, how growth will be accommodated with additional need for funding.
I'm a member of the faculty enrollment and advisory committee meeting at the Board of Education. I am the Boonsborough representative. Of course, I live in Keyesville, but anyway, there's a meeting, again, the third meeting tonight about this development, so I should have been there. I had to decide I'd come here first. The people at these meetings are really upset about where the, with this huge development, where kids are gonna go to school, what they're gonna do about it. Now, that's like down the road, so, but I'm just, put it on your agenda because I'm gonna make you aware of it. They're going to be calling you and asking what's gonna happen with this development. They're very upset.
Okay. That most likely, we would need to probably direct them to Jill Baker, who is our director of planning and zoning. She keeps very close track on school enrollment. She gets that information regularly from the Board of Education. And as new developments are planned, she projects how many students will be enrolled in either elementary, middle, and high school so that she can determine the impact on the schools and any potential impact, impact fees that would be needed to be collected for future growth of that school. So she would be our point of contact there.
Well, I'm very impressed with the county, with the Board of Education, and they have got this planned out for years. But I mean, right now, not only this, they're so concerned with so many, our elementary schools are above capacity, are at capacity.
They are.
And with the new Downsville School even, they've got a development off of Virginia Avenue that's gonna have to come into that one, therefore closing Fountain Rock and Hickory. They're gonna have to redistrict them other places, so it's a big concern for everyone. So, good luck.
All right, I'll move on to number four. Sarah Baker had brought up the issue of a property tax credit for first responders in Washington County, and there's a separate email, I believe.
Hello. I know we all love our first responders here in Washington County, and a lot of our neighboring counties offer property tax relief, and we do not. So even Montgomery County, who sometimes doesn't love their first responders, offers 2,500 in property tax relief for active public safety officers and eligible volunteers. Anne Rundle County is $3,500. Charles County offers annual credits for volunteer emergency responders. Again, I don't need to get the whole thing, but Prince George's County, Carroll, Allegheny Garrett and Washington Counties, we don't offer anything. So it would maybe be something we could talk about of something to show appreciation to our first responders, to retain them into our communities. And, I don't know, we can't let our other county show us up, I think.
Well, I will say that the Board of County Commissioners is very generous to our volunteer fire community. They provide over $10 million of support already for fire apparatus, for turnout gear, for SEBA, to make sure that all of our first responders are safe. We're also in the process of converting emergency medical services to career-paid staff and in the very beginning stages of converting fire to career-paid staff as well. So as many of those come on to county employees and career-paid staff, that will, you know, lessen the impact on our volunteer companies. As far as in addition, as far as looking at a property tax credit, the potential fiscal impact of providing a property tax credit to first responders would be substantial, and it's probably why many of our western Maryland counties don't offer it because we're, we don't have the accessible base that Montgomery County and many of those larger counties do. So even if we estimated that there would be 2,500 eligible first responders here in Washington County with the $2,500 credit, that would be $6.25 million that we would need to figure out where, what we would need to cut within our operating expenditures to be able to afford that much of a revenue loss for that property tax credit. Now, we could provide a higher or lower tax credit depending on the number of property owners that would qualify and the amount of the accessible base here in Washington County. But just, you know, if we provided a similar credit, it would be $6.25 million, which is not sustainable and not affordable at this time.
And if you also look Frederick County, they limit it to surviving spouses, of fallen officers, and that's, would be another, there probably are not a lot of those, and that would be, go a long way. It's another idea.
Okay. I'll take that information. I don't have data related to how many people that would impact, but I can certainly take that information back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. I'll move on to another issue Judy raised, which is countywide concern, not so much a town concern, but the issue of homelessness, strategies and resources for addressing homelessness in the county.
You've made an effort to get the homeless off the streets, and just wondering if you are doing anything, addressing any places for them to stay or more, how to accommodate them.
Much of that information is actually, or much of those services are handled by outside agencies like the Community Action Council, Interfaith Housing Coalition, Reach, Hark, Hawk. I do know that the sheriff's office has not received any reports of front patrol deputies in the field, that there is a significant increase in the number of homelessness calls in the county or outside of the city limits, the city of Hagerstown limits, I should say, in the county patrolled areas that may have resulted from the Hagerstown City ordinance that was recently enacted. Citizens who do observe or have any homelessness encampments on their property are encouraged to call the sheriff's office to report the incident and can, they can meet with the deputies on their property to address the problem if you do have any residents that reach out to you regarding a problem. Services and resources are available for homeless population, and those include but are not limited to sheltering and crisis intervention from those outside agencies.
All right. Number seven we have here is the planning for the 250th celebration on behalf of the county and the nation, of course, planning updates and town involvement. Judy, you wanna speak to that one?
Maybe Sarah should speak to that one, because you've planned something, haven't you?
I did, I don't have Washington County on that.
No, well, we did meet with a committee, and I think we have a committee to get established. We have not done, done much of anything yet, but I'm ready to go if we have any ideas, but...
Well, I can tell you, one idea that Sarah's been working on is just to do like a history, or a history trivia night in Keyesville. We recently purchased a historic church on Main Street, dates back to the Civil War. It was used as a hospital, and we are working on rehabbing that now. We've received a grant for slate roof replacement, and we're working on still some more funds for that slate roof because it's very expensive, but also some electrical work that needs to be done. And so we're hoping to kind of have a grand opening for this historic church around the same time period as the 250th anniversary, maybe host the trivia night there if the timing works out, and probably have a walking tour. We have already developed a brochure that has all the historic homes and sort of a summary of their historic significance. So that's what Keyesville has for now for the 250th.
Those are great ideas. I know that our director of public relations and marketing is collecting that information that the town, for any events the towns are handling so that we can put it, kind of, on a countywide community calendar of events. We are planning to kick off the 250th anniversary, not only of the United States, but of, or the signing of the Declaration of Independence, but of Washington County's founding. We're kicking that off with a float in the Mummer's Parade that's coming up this October to try to give us a whole year-long celebration. Some of the other things that the county is doing to commemorate the 250th anniversary include the commemorative coins. I believe that most of you should have already received a box of those commemorative coins with the county seal, as well of each of the nine municipalities. We are also planning a July 4th celebration at the Ag Center on the Sharpsburg Pike. That is a major community-wide event that will feature some live music, will have vendors. We do plan to have kids' activities, historical exhibits, as well as a drone show and fireworks. And I'm really excited about the drone show. I don't, I don't know that we've had any in our area anytime that I can recall, so I'm excited to see that. And then, of course, August 30th of 2026, we are planning Washington County's Birthday Bash, so that will be 250th birthday celebration at Penmar Park, and that will be sort of commemorating Washington County's 250th anniversary. Other types of events that we are planning include Washington County's hometown heroes. So as part of the 250th celebrations, we're honoring veterans, active-duty military, and our first responders throughout the year. So if you would like to recognize someone from your area, or if you know of somebody who needs to be recognized, please submit that information to our public work, or Public Relations Department. And then lastly, we are dedicating a George, a six-foot George Washington statue. That statue will be placed right here in front of the Historic Circuit Courthouse, and we will have an unveiling ceremony for that as well. We do have a website established, and we have an email address established for anybody who would like to have, who has any questions or would like to submit any events. And that email is washingtoncountymd250, all one word, at washco-md.net. And then our website is washco-md.net/washington-county-250th-anniversary-3. We can send you an email with that information, and it is posted on our social media as well as on our Facebook, or on our website.
Thank you. We really appreciate the energy and the leadership the county is showing in this unique opportunity to celebrate, so thank you for that. Another couple of issues here that the residents raised, one was opioid settlement funding, asking about the status of the county's plan.
So...
Yeah, you got it here, so.
Yeah, that was recently delegated to our director of grants management, and she is working on a plan, and I did touch base with her last week. She is very close to completing that plan. So within the next 30 to 60 days, that plan will be brought forward before the Board of County Commissioners. They will need to review and approve it. Once it's approved by the Board of County Commissioners, we will submit it to the state. And then organizations within the county should be able to access or tap into that state funding that is available.
All right. I'll move on to the next one then. For our growing area there, Keyesville and Boonsborough, a resident asked about expansion of public transit, possibly a route or service down into our area at some point.
And that's also handled by our director of public works, Andrew Eschelman. He has indicated that the county's five-year transit development plan has included a pilot program for bus service to Smithsburg, Boonsborough, and Clear Spring. It does not include service to Keyesville at this time. Feedback on potentially high-demand areas and service days would be appreciated, so if you are aware of any of those key performance indicators, please provide that to Andrew Eschelman. They would need further study before any implementation, and the transportation development plan can be found on our website, and we'll provide you with a link to that so that you have it for reference as well.
All right, thank you. We have an additional item, if you're open to it, another item that Judy raised, which is access to cardiac rehabilitation in the county.
We have a few residents in the area, they were hoping that they could talk, speak to you, thinking that you might come to our meeting, but since that didn't happen, they asked me to, to direct this to you. They're concerned that, as you all are, like, improve the well-being of the Washington County health, health community, that you, they wanna know if you are aware of how difficult it is to get an appointment or get into cardiac rehab here in Hagerstown area. I don't know if you are...
I wasn't aware that there's a problem, but if you have any details or information, I'd be happy to reach out to Dr. Joshy, who is the CEO of Merediths Medical, and I believe Merediths Medical is the parent company for Hagerstown Heart. Be happy to provide him with, with your concerns.
Well, what I, what they have told me, and this has just been recently this week, okay, it is at Hagerstown Heart now, the cardiac rehab. It was at Robin Hood, they moved it to Hagerstown Heart. It has been closed the last two weeks because of lack of staff.
Oh, wow.
Also, that, that room is apparently small, they can only house five people at a time, and there's a list of people who are waiting to be evaluated. And the doctors or surgeons have told my friend that they can go to Frederick or they should go to Winchester. Well, now, that's just not right. If you know, if you're having a heart problem, you're not gonna want to drive to Frederick or to Winchester or whatever. What is, what is happening here with cardiac rehab? So is this temporary, or what, what is it? But I, I wanted to make you aware of that.
Okay, I will reach out to Dr. Joshy.
Okay, thank you.
All right, well, unless any of the council has anything else to add, that concludes our list of, of stuff, and we appreciate you listening and taking these back. So I'll just turn it back over to you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, comments and reports? Commissioner Wagner, you wanna go first?
No, I want to thank you guys for coming tonight. Appreciate your input. I think you missed one, storm response, did you miss some?
Oh, I sure did.
Yeah, well, I'll let you get that one out then.
Must not, well, you...
That was, that was put on right after we had the big storm where all the branches and trees were down, and a lot of residents in our area were without electricity for a long time. I think that, you know, what I saw, they did a wonderful job with trying to do this, but, but I, you know, the squeaky wheel gets oil. I was told to bring this up if there's any, you know, if there are ongoing things going to improve this service.
I was almost hesitant to raise that because I know they were overwhelmed in the unique event, but...
Well, I know in the last storms, and even in the South County flooding events from many years, several years ago, we do have a tremendous amount of staff who respond, not only in our highways department, but in our engineering department to handle the, you know, engineering aspects to roads washing out, bridges washing out, and our emergency management. As far as storm response for South County goes, when their storms are severe, we will open our departmental emergency operations center and coordinate with emergency services, highways, and our public works to make sure that the most serious emergencies are taken care of first and that roads are open as safely and as quickly as possible. We also reached out to our sheriff's office, and they've indicated that in conjunction with our Washington County Emergency Management Department and our Emergency Services Department, they also consider part of the first responses to any significant storm, they will also be considered a part of that as well. So Washington County Sheriff's Office, as well as our emergency management and our emergency services department, consider it top priority, and they, they do their best to make sure that roads are clear and the public is safe. When there are down power lines, they help facilitate reaching out to, whether it's Allegheny Power, whether it's Verizon, or, you know, if it's down cable lines, they, they help facilitate that for our residents, and I've seen that firsthand.
So anyway, thank you. Thank you, and thanks for coming in, and, you know, if anything we can do for you, give us a shout, and hope you'll join in, lock arms on the 250th, and...
Absolutely.
Get the county through a celebration.
Thank you.
Randy Lovell?
Hey, thank you for coming. I have a question. Outside of the town of Keyesville, the sign that says, "Where Yangtze thrusts meet southern hospitals," where does that come from?
That's close. I'll let Judy speak to that one.
Go ahead, Judy.
That has been on since I've been a little girl, so that's been like 100 years ago. I'm not sure where that came from, but, but I fought, and another councilwoman fought to keep that on the sign that that has been around for whatever. So I'm not sure who did it and where it came from, but it, but since we grew up there, we've been seeing that, that slogan, and we love it.
I do too.
Good.
I just always remind me of Keyesville. And one more question, and this is, I'm asking this question for a friend, do they still stock the Little Ante in Creek?
Yes, they do.
For the kids, for the kids.
Yes, they do. It goes quickly.
Yeah.
Yes, but they do, yes.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
I think we should change our sign to "A Rose Between Two Thorns," just a little dig at Sharpsburg and Boonsborough, but, you know.
You know, when we had those signs made, we were tempted to leave that slogan off because it's a lot to read when you're driving, but there was significant pushback, so we kept it on there, yeah.
Thank you, thank you, John. Again, thank you for coming all the way up here to visit with us and share your concerns, and our staff will definitely get back to you. I hope all of our answers are complete and understandable and respond to your needs. I do think there's one observation about storm response, that don't we, haven't we responded by allowing the waste and tree debris and everything to be...
We have. We've provided stations at landfills in close proximity or at our transfer stations that allow people to dispose of their debris, storm debris, free of charge, and we usually leave that open for about two weeks, and we did that this most recent storm.
I think...
It's very well received.
Good, good. I hope that helped a little bit down your way, too. Could you remind us of some of the events you have coming up in the fall that might be in Keyesville? If there are, if you have any particular events?
We're having some small events in the fall. We're having a community yard sale and things like that. In the spring, we do an annual spring fest, usually in April, but it'll be in May this year because April gets a little dicey with weather.
Yeah.
So that's been building every year, and then we're looking forward to, of course, joining any 250th things that we can, so...
We might want you to the Menasable Delight where you...
Right.
September, yeah.
September, yes.
And then you have, you share some police coverage there?
We do.
And how is that working out for you? I'm always curious about how that is working, and if you have any particular problems in relation to, you know, security.
It's working very well, thank you for asking. That was an idea originated about six years ago, and to share a time of a deputy with other towns, and we had a chance to revisit that arrangement recently. We love it. It's a great thing for our town, and we have a good relationship with our deputy there, so hope to continue it as long as we can.
Can they come in?
Please.
I will say the price keeps going up, going up, and, you know, they do run, as I understand, I get why, they run calls outside of Keyesville when they're down here, but we pay for them. So like, you know, the Sharpsburg, Keyesville, and Williamsport, are those the ones that Sheriff, Officer Watkins?
Yeah.
I think somebody takes a double, and then we each, but the towns all split that up, but they do run calls in the county, too. And so sometimes, when we're looking at the price increase, we go. So, I mean, there could be a line, but we really like Officer Watkins. He's always at the right place at the right time. There's been several instances where something weird's happened, and it just so happens he drives right by. So that, so we really, really like the, like him, like the program, it's just that it's, the price is significantly... It's just that it's, the price has significantly gone up in the last few years.
If I could, I think one of the benefits of having someone who's, you know, stationed in South County, like, you know, even eight hours a week, or 16 with Sharpsburg, if something should jump off in South County, he's, he's already there and able to respond quicker, so. But yeah, he certainly does go where he's needed.
The residents love Santa.
Yeah, yeah. He's a great deputy. He's got a very good relationship in terms of community policing with, with folks, and he's, he's great, very approachable, and we appreciate him. Dakota Watkins.
Well, next time I see Sheriff Brian Albert, I will tell him about your deputy that you have and how well he's received, but also ask him about how he calculates the charges, just so I can understand it better. The last thing I have, just a little bit of information for me, just a reminder for anybody who's listening to, your, your monthly mayor town hall meeting is, you know, what day? Second Tuesday, second Monday?
First Wednesday.
First Wednesday? First Wednesday of every month, okay?
Subject to change if something else is happening, but yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Again, thank you so much for being up here.
Mr. Klein?
My turn. Good evening. Thank you for being here. Just some information I know from that storm in Easter, that's when the big storm happened. I was told by a guy from Timmickus, and there was over 100 trucks out of the area that came in here all over the county, helping to remove the trees and restore power. And I know from talking to some of our highway guys, they were out late in tonight, early in the morning, and some of the roads weren't cleared both ways, but they had so many trees, the roads that clear, that they cleared enough for a passage for a emergency vehicle or folks to get by in their car. So they really did a really good job getting it all done. Thanks for bringing that up. But we do kind of have a plan. I keep thinking back to 2015 at the South County flood, and we were having a budget hearing at HCC, and all the guys in the white shirts were looking at their phones, and they rushed out. And that's when that big storm hit down there, and we responded well to that. But it's always a concern, when you're out of power, out of power, it's an emergency for you. So thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you. Welcome. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
And just a little bit of tidbit, I guess, your town hall, the former bank, is probably 1968 or '69. I was a young electrician apprentice and worked with a gentleman to rewire that building under Mr. Lum, who was president of the bank at the time. And so I've got very fond memories of Keydiesville and the town hall, I can, I can assure you. So grew up in the Boonsburg, Keydiesville, Sharpsburg area, and very, very fond of that whole area. Something I'm thinking, with the 250th Anniversary and the thousands that we expect at the Ag Center, the close proximity of Keydiesville, the traffic, the overflow, that sort of thing, is I think it's very vital that we work together.
Absolutely. I'm looking forward to that, and thank you for the comments on town hall. Of course, it got turned into a town hall before my time, but it does a great job, and we're happy to have it.
But you know, Keydiesville was the first and only town in Washington County for the commissioners to have a sidewalk meeting.
Oh, yeah, I heard about that.
It got locked out, nobody showed up.
I heard about that. Matt Hel could be here tonight. He would, he would be happy to speak to you about that.
I forgot about that one. Yeah, we had a meeting on the sidewalk. It was a quick meeting, too. Very good.
Well, again, we appreciate the opportunity to collaborate and share here, and, you know, another thing I'll probably mention, these folks get tired of hearing it. I was in a parade a few years ago riding with Senator George Edwards, and we're halfway through the town, and he throws it up into park, and we stop, and I'm looking at him like something's wrong with him, and the parade's moving on, the people behind us are playing and marching in step, and George just sits there. And he goes, Commissioner, he said, I want you to understand something. He said, I want you to look down the street, I want you to look up the street. This is what America is all about. He said, these people know each other, they help each other, they care about each other. Small-town America is where it's all about. And he just sat there, and I'm like, George, the parade's moving on. He didn't care. And finally, you know, he.
It's the senator.
But he was the senator, he could do what he wanted. But the point is, you know, small-town charm, small-town comfort, security, you just can't beat it, so.
You love it, thank you.
With that, anything else?
Motion.
Motion for adjournment?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Again, thank you. And Lisa?